Let's call this meeting in order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Okay, thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Few administrative itones. We have an exit over here in the back corner and the one you came in. The town hall does have a generator, so if you have any, if we have a power outage, heaven forbid, we will have that. And if for some reason we need to evacuate, you follow Ron. He'll always be the first one out, so don't worry about it. Please silence your phones, pagers. Guess I'm dating myself. Any other electronic device, including your watches and your, any other device, so please do that. First item up is to get the approval of the March 5th meeting minutes. Do I, any, everyone have a chance to review those? Any comments or corrections? Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Tim, seconded by Adrian. Any other comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed or abstained? Okay, we're good. Legal notices were published. PB, or sorry, 2025-104. So we got that taken care of, so tonight, first item on the Order of Business from the agendas on the table over there would be PB 2025-0104 Victor Farmington Ambulance. Want to come up and kind of give us an overview of what's going on? This is the preliminary site plan application.
My name is Alex Tamer, but I'm the engineering. Obviously, been for you a few times already, but for the benefit of the public hearing, I'll spend a few minutes going over that.
Give us the highlights.
That summer, Victor Farmington Ambulance purchased the property of 5505 Route 96 from UR Thompson Health. They started going together, their designing team, looking at how they should renovate the building and build a three-day ambulance bay. Obviously, how their ambulances. We submitted in January to this board. In February, we went to the zoning board for sidewalk variance, relieving them of the need to install sidewalk on both Route 96 and Route 8. That was approved. We have completed the 30-day coordinated seeker review. I believe it's the board's intent to designate themselves as a agency for that. Obviously, the application before you know it is a full site plan application, so included with that are architecturals. There are both a rendering and elevations of the building, the expansion, what could be asphalt route, but are deciding on ultimate of for sale along. Not pertinent to this board, but they will be, I think they have applied for building permits, renovate the existing space. From a site plan standpoint, there's not a whole lot. We are adding some asphalt, obviously, to provide access to the base. We are making smaller lighting improvements. It will be upgrading the water service as required by the county, so they will have some special water. I think that concludes my formal presentation.
Alright, let's turn it over to staff. Ron, we got two resolutions tonight?
One dealing with seeker.
One seeker and one preliminary.
Setting a public hearing for April 2nd. Yeah, 2nd. Right?
Well.
Myers. Oh, that's Myers.
Okay, this is the public hearing for this one, and this is a preliminary site plan approval.
You've got a.
With condition.
With conditions.
Yep.
I get.
I know. Too many of them, trust me, I know.
Only 15 today.
I know, only 15. Any wanted to comment on here, Ron?
No.
We're good to go?
Any questions from the board or the applicant?
We will get there, absolutely. From building, Paula?
I have nothing to add. I've reviewed the resolutions.
Resolutions are good, okay. Highway?
I'm all set.
Engineering?
I'm all set as well.
Oh, okay. So this is a public hearing. Do we have anyone here to speak for or against this application? Anyone here to speak for or against this application? Okay, online, anybody here to speak for or against this application? I'll say it one more time, anybody to speak for or against this application online? Okay, then I'll turn it over to, to the board. Regina? Adrian? Doug? Tim? Okay, we got two resolutions. You've read both resolutions and you're okay with the conditions? Okay, so with this, the, well, we need to close public hearing. So first off, we'll have a motion to close the public hearing. Moved by Doug, seconded by Regina, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, so public hearing's closed. So first item up is a seeker determination of non-significance. Everybody get a chance to review the resolution? Applicants okay with it, so do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the resolution as presented? Moved by Adrian, seconded by Doug. Anybody have any comments? Clerk take a roll call vote, please.
Lucia?
Aye.
Doug Beatles?
Aye.
Regina Sussa?
Aye.
Adrian Bellas?
Aye.
Aye. Our seeker is completed. Next item up is the preliminary site plan approval resolution with conditions. Applicant has said he's okay with those. So, anybody have any comments on them? Okay, do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve this resolution as presented? Moved by Doug, seconded by Regina. Any other comments? Clerk take a roll call vote, please.
Lucia?
Aye.
Doug Beatles?
Aye.
Regina Sussa?
Aye.
Adrian Bellas?
Aye.
Aye. You're good to go on that one. Okay, yeah, just, the key is to get it in as soon as you can. We'll get the signatures on it, make sure everything's good to go, that we're in the conditions, and then we can move on to final. Okay? Okay, next item up is PB 2025-0101. Final site plan amendment, DeKalb LLC. Go ahead and tell us what you're doing.
Good evening, everyone. John Jones, Mark's in hearing. Here tonight for DeKalb LLC. I got the applicant here as well.
Okay.
Like you said, Mr. Chairman, we're here for the final tonight. Plans, I got minor no revisions to the plans that have changed from the original, so nothing really that's right there. Just to refresh everybody, it's a 720 square foot building. New building on the same lot.
Mm-hmm.
Not in addition or. And, yes, no driveway, minor driveway edits.
Okay, it's just an amendment to the final site plan from the board.
Yep.
Okay. Turn it over to staff. What we got in front of us is a seeker determination of non-significance because it's an amendment? And then the amendment with condition.
The condition, the resolution with condition. The question that came up that's in the resolution is that you have a site plan that shows openings for that building facing to the west. You've got building elevations prepared by that firm that you hired to design and struct the building. Those openings face to the south. We've got to get those two.
Yeah, I think the building plan might have gotten updated. I do want to mention something else on the conditions. On the resolution letter, mission number one. We're questioning for the applicant to go to the DBA to be granted the sidewalk, frontage sidewalk.
Variance?
Variance.
Yep.
I guess I would question the necessity for that. I know.
Requirements part of the MTOD.
I know my point is probably new, but they know other sidewalks, they're not, the town.
Why we're suggesting you go for variance? That's exactly why. We have no authority to give you a variance from the MTOD standards. We're a planning board, the zoning board of appeals is the one that can give you the variance. We can't do it.
No, I'm aware of that. It's just the condition says that we have to go to the DBA. I was just wondering.
Because the ZBA is the only one that can give you a variance through a requirement of the MTOD.
You, you, you do not need to go to the ZBA, just construct the sidewalk.
Well, that's true too. Yeah, you can construct sidewalk or go to the ZBA.
Well, that's the point. This property's got three frontages, one on 332, one on a road that was under 332. So build, physically build a sidewalk would be not feasible.
That's why we suggest you get a variance.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know how much clearer I can be. Get a variance. I'm pretty sure DBA's going to be okay with that.
Yeah.
We just don't have the authority.
Yeah, I can say that. It's just, we wish to go with the broad preliminary, so now we're applying, I mean, I go.
This is an amendment. No preliminary. Well, the preliminary is done a while ago.
Oh, yeah, a long time.
Long time ago. This is, this is an amendment to the final.
Yes. Yeah, okay, we'll go to the ZBA.
Just tell Brian to put some sidewalks in. I mean, you got an option. I understand where you're coming from. We're trying to help you here. Okay, Ron?
Well, that's all I had to.
I don't have anything.
Highway?
I don't have anything.
Engineering?
This wasn't referred to, MRB group, I have no comments.
Okay. You got, you read the conditions and other than you didn't like the first one, everything's okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Tim? Doug? Adrian? Regina? I'm good too. I think it's good, and I totally understand this is not the first one of these, and it's not going to be the last one, and we have to go through this. Victor Farmington Fire or the ambulance corps just had to do the exact same thing. Had to do.
Would you know when that meeting, the next meeting, will be for them?
Uh, toward the end of the month. I don't know what the dates are for submission. I don't, you'd have to talk to staff tomorrow and find out when the date's.
Yeah, give Dan a call tomorrow and he'll go yet.
Give Dan or Paul or somebody in the department, okay? No. I don't believe so. I mean, I would, I, I'm saying that only because I've been doing this for 27 years, but I'm pretty sure no. Okay, so we have two resolutions. The first one, seeker determination of non-significance. Do I have someone to waive the reading and approve this resolution as presented? Motion by Tim, seconded by.
Adrian.
Adrian, any other comments? Clerk take a roll call vote, please.
Lucia?
Aye.
Doug Beatles?
Aye.
Regina Sussa?
Aye.
Adrian Bellas?
Aye.
Aye. So next item up is the final site plan amendment. Now, this includes a condition of getting that variance so that you don't have to come back to us. Once you get the variance, you're good to go, you can submit everything, and we're, we're good to make it happen. So, do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve that resolution as presented? Regina? Seconded by Adrian. All in favor, signify by, well, I'm sorry, never mind. Clerk take a roll call vote, please.
Lucia?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Regina Sussa?
Aye.
Adrian Bellas?
Aye.
Aye. You're good to go, guys. Just get that in. Yep, appreciate it, and.
So if we get the zoning.
You just got to get the, you got to have that marked on the plan. Turn it in, we'll sign it, then you got to do your pre-construction and all that kind of stuff, work with Stan. Okay?
Thanks, guys.
Good to go. That's as fast as we can do it for you. Okay, thanks.
See you.
Okay, see you. Next item up is PB 2025-0202 TNM Properties Villager Construction Preliminary Site Plan on Loomis Road. Come on up, how you doing? Oh, it's fallen down, must be the downs. I didn't say that. Don't put that in the minutes. Or in the recording. Cut that from recording, okay? Okay, tell us what you're doing here. Yep?
I'm here to talk about the Loomis Road property and project for Villager Construction.
Yep.
They are proposing a validation of the former 10-lot industrial park into a single lot along with the construction of approximately 38,600 square foot building to house their operations. 58 parking spaces for employees and guests. Eight-day maintenance structure, which is here on the site, offices would be to the north, arcing to the northwest of that structure. We are proposing a roadway within an easement to go back to this facility. They're proposing it as a 66-foot wide easement, thereby being able to dedicate it to the town as a town road. We have designed a stormwater management area to the south of the property and the backside of the residential structures here to carry all of the development for remaining acreage of the parcel. We've designed it to be clients and additional storage area within that home structure. We realize that we cannot take them back from this evening as we decided to wait for the 30-day seeker time train. We requested the board set a level hearing for April 2nd. And we also asked the board for a waiver to the sidewalk, and I know what I'm going to hear, so we will, we will submit for a variance from the zoning board of appeals to remove the requirement to have sidewalks along Loomis Road.
Right.
Sideways in that area. Understand that we won't vote for that.
Glad you listened.
I did listen. Utilities are available to the site. We have a water connection that is available approximately in this location here. We'll bring in water to serve this building as well as the remainder of the property. Sanitary sewer would be connected to the south of Loomis Road and a dedicated line to come in to serve this building as well as the remaining lands. So in order, what we are asking for is preliminary overall approval on this after the public hearing on April 2nd, and we'll come back for final.
Okay.
If we're on receiving preliminary approval, we will be making a request to the planning board for any grading permit to start in on some of the grading exercises on the property prior to receiving.
We do that? Oh, we did. Yeah. Haven't done it in a while, but, yep. Okay.
But we'll do that on receipt of the preliminary approval plus.
Okay.
I think everything else is pretty self-explanatory within the letter of intent. We did appear before the Ontario County Planning Board. We did have that with PRC, and we were providing comments from MRB.
Mm-hmm.
Did provide responses to those comments already in written format. I can review it if that gives you the like.
Oh, that's technical. We leave that up to.
Fair enough. We can deal with.
EK engineer down on the end.
All the way to the end, we gave them the.
Okay, there you go.
I think with that at this point, I have nothing further. Love to answer any questions before we have it.
Okay, Ron?
Well, first of all, Spencer, I'd like to compliment you on not following the Peter Bowers rules of making a presentation. Thank you.
It is a good thing.
There's still air in the room. We have a, today, the noon, the review and comment period ended. There's no objections to the planning board being designated the lead agency. That's one of the resolutions that the planning board has tonight.
Okay.
To direct the parts 2 and 3 to be prepared for your public hearing coming up on April 2nd. You've had the opportunity to review both of those. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Hey? Yeah. All right, Paula?
I'm set.
You're good. Highway?
I have nothing at this time.
Engineering?
No, MRB group did issue a letter dated in March 12th. One item for the board's note is that the applicant is and the design engineers are sizing the stormwater facility for full buildout. So they've designed it in a manner to accommodate all future growth. They're still working on, I believe, updates to that SWIP. Upon receipt of that, we'll provide comments for the board's purview.
Perfect, perfect. Okay, we have the two resolutions, the seeker and the resolution. Send them to the ZBA, correct?
Yeah, the only other thing I will add to this is that the county planning board did review it at their meeting.
Right.
March 12th. And we have that for the public hearing record as well.
It didn't disapprove it, right?
No, no.
Oh, I didn't think so. Okay, Tim? Doug? Adrian? Regina? I do have a couple just general comments since we get to the preliminary, I'm going to bring them up then anyway. So, first off is screening. You may have to, or we may require you to screen down a little farther, so you cover the back of that house there and, and do that kind of thing. I'm also not sure if the throughway authority will want some screening on the backside to the throughway. I don't see why personally, but, you know, I don't think they will. But certainly, it's easy enough to do that, just so I think so. I will make some comments about the driveway. We've talked about that before. Driveway has to be built to town standards if you plan to dedicate it, which means that it has to have all of the inspections done at the right times to do that. The other thing you want to consider is this is in the MTOD area. Thus, all driveway spacing on that road will have to meet MTOD standard. Just keep that in the back of your mind as you start cutting off pieces, and I understand that, but just make sure you're not caught up with some type of driveway spacing that doesn't meet requirements of MTOD.
Are you talking about driveways that are coming off of this road?
Yes, exactly. Because it's not going to be a town road in the beginning, so you can put your, you can put your driveway spacings on the left side all you want. But when you go to turn it over to Tim, it's going to be required to meet the MTOD standard. Just something to keep in the back of your mind, because I know I've heard that you guys want to turn that over at some point to the town, which I understand, so we're going to have to have someplace for the plows to turn around in the back. You're going to have to have driveway spacings that meet MTOD standards. You want to think about that before you start building those driveways because you could have to do some major rearranging once you say, okay, we're ready to dedicate it, and oh, by the way, we're not ready for you to do it. Am I saying the right things, Tim?
Yeah. The other thing I would add to that is the spacing along Loomis Road to make sure that whatever goes in there isn't going to be a large generator of traffic. It's going to affect your spacing standards.
Well, and we would hope that all of the things built on the left side there come out to that roadway, not out to Loomis.
Oh, the, the intent.
Exactly.
Is this is the main access road for the.
Yes.
Very similar to the 10-lot industrial park that was approved with that.
Correct.
Single access, and that one single access was located.
Yep.
In this general.
In that general, yes.
Can I just ask?
You can ask any question you want.
So when the original 10-lot subdivision was approved, it was nine developable lots, and it was a lot for the detention area in the center of us, it was a circular drive.
Yes.
It was one access coming through.
Yep.
That also have to follow all the MT, the MTOD.
MTOD.
Does that have to follow those standards?
I would think yes. It would have, yes. But I think they kind of did it like you did. They kind of broke them up, but we didn't approve any of the lots, only the main lot. So we didn't have to really look at driveway spacing because they were more conceptual. Like if you had thrown and broken that up into X number of lots, it could be conceptual, but we're not approving that tonight. So, I just wanted you to be aware, because I thought of that one night when I couldn't go to sleep. I said, you guys really got to make sure that you don't sell off pieces and then go, oh crap, now I can't give it to the town. Or you got to consolidate driveways and do all kinds of other things, so. Just giving you a warning ahead. For what's going on. Okay, we've got two resolutions. Applicants have said that they're okay. So the first one is the seeker designation as lead agency. Do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve that resolution? Moved by Regina, seconded by Doug. Any other comment? Clerk take a roll call vote, please.
Lucia?
Aye.
Doug Beatles?
Aye.
Regina Sussa?
Aye.
Adrian Bellas?
Aye.
Aye. So the next item up is the resolution responding to your request for waiver, and you know how to handle that one, so do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve that resolution? Moved by Doug, seconded by. Adrian, any other comments? Clerk take a roll call vote, please.
Lucia?
Aye.
Doug Beatles?
Aye.
Regina Sussa? Adrian Bellas?
Aye.
Aye, okay, good to go. Get moving on there and get stuff into the ZBA. I, like I said, I don't think it's an issue, so get in there and. Yeah, then you can get into our preliminary and get rolling. Okay, yep. Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Ron.
Thanks. Thanks, guys. I know he needed all the support you guys could give him tonight.
I did, actually. I always, and I always do.
See? Right answer. Okay, next item up is PB 2025-0206 the Mati subdivision preliminary four lot located on Pike Road.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name's Bob Hatch. I'm online tonight.
Hey, Bob, how you doing?
I am well, and yourself, sir?
Living the dream.
Excellent. I'm also here, my client is also online today with us. So we are proposing, we've got a 28.8, 28.2 acre existing parcel with the house on it and an exist, existing cell tower. We're proposing a four-lot subdivision that's going to cut off the house, the cell tower, and then have two vacant lots associated with it. We're not proposing any proposed improvements at this point in time. With this subdivision, it's basically just cutting up the lots, and I believe my client is planning on putting the house up for sale in the near future. And then Ron brought to our attention that we would probably need to address the existing cell tower because the special use permit has expired on that, so that is also part of what we're doing tonight.
Okay. So what do we have tonight? Ron?
Well, two things. First of all, you, you've got a subdivision application that you're scheduling a a public hearing for April 2nd.
Okay.
That's the first action.
Okay. And then the second one is?
The second one is the application for a special use permit and final site plan amendment for an existing site that's not going to change.
Right, and that'll go to April 2nd as well. We basically just have two to put on the April 2nd, um, meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Back when, uh, this application was originally reviewed and approved.
Right.
The planning board at that time had the policy of putting conditions on the, uh, specialty. Since then, courts have held that you issue a special use permit, it runs for the property unless you have some very sound reasons for putting a time limit on it, uh, you can't do that anymore. This was originally, uh, restricted to a two-year period to coincide with the renewal of the FCC permit. The FCC permit was renewed. The FCCC permit doesn't expire. It continues with the tower. And so, uh, we have that situation to deal with just to clean up the, uh,
Clean it up, make it legal to the way we're doing the business today. Okay.
You got it.
Paula?
I have nothing additional.
We're good on this one then. Tim?
I'm good.
Engineering, Lance?
I'm good as well.
Okay. Board, anyone have anything? These are two pretty simple ones. We're just basically putting them out to the second of, uh, April. So first item up is the planning board resolution PB 0206. Uh, do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve that resolution? Motion by Tim, seconded by Regina. Uh, clerk, take a roll call vote, please. Aye. Okay, you got that one. Now let's do the special use the same way. Do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve that resolution? Moved by Regina, seconded by Doug. Any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please. Aye. Okay. Thank you, guys. We'll, uh, we'll see you on the second of April.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
All right, you too. Okay, next item up is the final site plan amendment for Myers RV 2025 dash 0208.
Uh, good evening, Alex. I'm engineering. Um, this project was obviously before this board for a different reason. After doing the lot line adjustment, the property owners, the rear, uh, we noticed the zoning didn't align with the property lines. Obviously, it was referred to this board, um, this part of the rezoning. But now we are before you, uh, for a final site plan amendment and that, uh,
All we're doing tonight though is just putting it on the agenda for April 2nd. Then that's all we need to know. Ron, anything?
Good to go.
Paula? Tim? Lance?
I'm good.
Anybody else? Anybody on the board? I have motion to waive the reading and approve this resolution.
Anybody on, online that has any?
No, I don't think so. Moved by Doug, seconded by Adrian. Do I have, uh, clerk, take a roll call vote, please. Aye. Okay, you're good to go. You got it.
That was for April 2nd.
Yeah, that was to move to April 2nd, so. Next item up is PB 2025 dash 3, 0301, David and Julie Lowery. Anyone here to speak for or against that application? Nobody, nobody? Anybody online? Okay, this is a resolution to, um, state that this is not ready for public review and formal because there are items on the subdivision plat that need to be there based on code. Uh, Ron?
Yeah, sure. This, this is on Ellsworth Road.
Yep.
Okay, uh, the lot that they are proposing to subdivide off from the parent parcel.
Correct.
Is showing a lot width that is allowed in that zoning district provided you have evidence that the site can accommodate a conventional individual onsite wastewater treatments.
Correct.
We don't have, right, that's code. We don't have that. So we're asking for that information to be shown on the preliminary, uh, subdivision plat so that we can then rant, uh,
And we can put it on another agenda. Another agenda. So they just need to complete that piece that was not on the original, uh, that didn't meet code, so.
Well, my understanding is that, that they had also submitted a preliminary site plan for this project which, uh, identified certain things that we couldn't accept because we don't have a valid lot yet.
Right.
So, um, we just need that information and then we can move forward.
We need a document to meet code.
Yep.
Okay, Paula?
I have nothing additional.
Tim? Lance?
I mean, this stuff.
Oh, I have anything. Board?
Are they trying to just subdivide the land?
Trying to subdivide, but because of the width, they have to prove it first.
Or come back, get to just subdivide because of the width.
The zoning district requires, uh, evidence that a lot is either going to be served by a conventional system or a raised fill system. If it's a raised fill system, they have to have 300 foot upfrontage. They don't have that. If it's a conventional system, they only need 150. They got 152 feet, so there's not a problem there. But we don't have the results of a deep hole or per test.
If it was over 300, you wouldn't have to do it.
Right.
I was just saying, first it was just subdivision, so you just divide the land, but you were, you're, you're trying to make it, but to do that, to get a build of a lot, you need to know what, what system will work to know.
Right, and that's unique to the AAD and the RRAD district. For us, the districts don't have that stipulation.
Okay, do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve this resolution? Uh, proving that the, is not ready for public review and formal consideration. Moved by Adrian, seconded by Regina. Any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please. Okay, next item up is Ryan and Ashley Breger. Uh, this is a preliminary site plan for a proposed single-family dwelling. Um, I understand that the resolution states that if the applicant wishes to have their detached two-car garage in front of their house, they need a ZBA approval. If they don't, then it's ready to be moved forward. So do I have anybody to speak for this one? Anybody online? There's nobody online. Nobody here wants to speak for this one? Okay, and we will move forward with the, it's not ready. Or they have to tell us.
Yeah.
Resolution is written very well. I just, I didn't do it justice.
Thank you. I, I talked to the engineer, Vonnable, at the Green Engine Land Surveying in Newark. And, uh, he admitted that he didn't think about the front yard issue for the accessory structure.
Aye.
And I also talked with, uh, Ryan Breger.
Yeah.
Who lives in, uh, Palmyra. Um, and, uh, I don't know where they're gonna go with this. They're either going to, uh, revise the preliminary site plan drawing to show the compliance to the town code requirements, or they're going to go to the ZBA for an area variance.
They have, well, they also have another option, and that is to attach it to the house. If they, I don't know how far it is off the house, but if it's in a situation where they can attach it to the house, all of a sudden bingo, they're good to go. Oh, there's some options for them, but that's what engineers are for.
That's right.
Not for a planner.
Well, that's, was one of the, uh, uh, options of, uh, addressed to him.
Uh-huh.
You know, redesign it, make it in compliance with the town code.
There you go.
Doing what used, just existed does.
Okay.
Go from there.
Okay, Paula?
Nothing additional.
Tim?
I don't have any comment.
Engineer?
I'm good, thanks.
Is that a good idea?
That was a great idea.
Board? I have motion to waive the reading and approve that resolution as presented. Motion by Tim, seconded by.
Adrian?
Adrian, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please. Aye. Okay, PB 2025 dash 0303, De Hollander Design Final Planet, uh, application, approval with conditions. This is, yeah, this is 303.
I mean, for public hearing.
Okay, it sets to public meeting. Staff? Anything on staff? Anything on the board? Motion to waive the reading and approve the resolution?
Is that for April 2nd too? It didn't say?
Yes. I think the answer is yes. Moved by Doug, seconded by. Hey, Regina, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please. Aye. Next item up is De Hollander Designs PB 2025 dash 0304. This is to the final site plan applications for lot R3. This is another one scheduling it to April 2nd. Anybody have anything on that one? Nothing on that one, nothing on the board. Motion to waive the reading and approve the resolution. Moved by Adrian, seconded by Regina. Any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please. Aye. Okay, I'm gonna go out of the way just a little bit and see if the public has any comments.
He's sorry, no. I was here to talk about this lot, lot four. I thought this was a meeting about that. I didn't know they were just rescheduling it, so.
Lot four, that was the last one we did? Oh, lot three. All we're doing is scheduling that for April 2nd. But we're glad, if you wanna add something, we'll think, listen to. Well, you sat through an entertaining meeting. We went through, how many was there there, Ron?
Fifteen.
Fifteen in 45 minutes? That is, that may be a record.
I only wish I could have written them that quickly.
That's good, that's. Yeah, we'll make sure they bring this.
I was thinking, so that house, that house has been built.
Well, sits far back?
Yeah, and there's like green, big little plant. Is that where the house is gonna go?
Assume so.
Talk to staff. Get in and talk to staff. They could show you the whole, the whole map of the whole thing, and they'll tell you everything to know about it. Come in to see staff.
Say yes, because I'm building the other house back there in Charleston right now.
Oh, you are?
It's almost on degree one.
Yeah.
So that's, I probably staked it out for them to see if that's where they wanna put the house. I'm not sure 100% of that's fully where it's going, but by what the maps that we already saw preliminary, that's about where it's going.
Okay.
But I mean, if you wanna see more of that or no more, you'd have to stop in and talk to building department. I'm hoping they can really show you.
They'll show you everything.
That's, I just wanted to learn the depth of the exercise.
Yeah, so it's gonna have a long driveway, you know, if you don't share it back.
Okay, yeah, but you can stop in. They've got the map right there. They'll show it to you, okay? You got it. Or you can stay for a few minutes after we get through here, and you can actually look at them right there, because she's got them right in front of her. Uh, just wait a little bit. Let's get through to everything else here. Yeah, if I had done it in order, we wouldn't have had an issue. Ron, we're, we're doing discussions, Ron.
Okay, first item I have is, um, you and I talked about these deadlines for these applications.
Yeah, they're not, they're not very good.
And I talked to the.
Political statement.
Today. You know, we have a deadline of Thursday, the week before the meeting. And when I get, and application to figure out what's involved, um, usually Monday afternoon before I finish that. Um, that, that's gotta, that's going to change because what we're gonna do, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, Paula, Dan, Dan and Paula and I discussed this this afternoon. The, uh, schedule that you have, the doc for this year, has two dates on it. If it's a simple application, we can put it on for the first meeting of the month. If it's a complex application or something that has to go to the county, then it goes on to the second application. I just wanted to, you know, bring that to your attention that we're, we're not gonna continue to have all these engineering firms come in at, uh, five minutes to noon on Thursday with, uh, volumes of paperwork to, uh, have to get a resolution together for you guys to look at it.
I agree. Or move it up to Tuesday at noon or something like that.
You're doing like a amendment to that or something that has something that says if it's a simple, it's a work.
No, we're, we're not changing the schedule at all. Alls we're doing is we're letting staff make the determination that, uh,
That's good. That works, that works for me.
Okay. Uh, secondly, um, we have the, um, application, as you recall, Pine View up there on, um,
Town of Victor.
Town of Victor and Town of Farnington, Town Line.
Right.
Uh, pro- line, line room. Thank you. Um, that application, they scheduled a public hearing, uh, for the seeker, not for anything else. It was seeker.
Right.
Um, and, uh, we had notified them of our, uh, involved agency status.
Right.
Because of the, uh, road and the three lots in, in Farming. Okay, um, one of our residents lives up there in Klein Road. She went to the public hearing. Um, she asked questions about how they had drained a wetland and was told that she didn't know what she was talking about, which was probably the wrong thing to say.
Yeah, I'm sure that was.
Um, so we got an email today saying that the town has initiated the seeker process and the deadline is going to be April 10th. As of today, we have not received any notification as an involved agency.
We reach out, are we reaching out to them, find out why?
Uh, w- we have made that request and we are reaching out.
Okay.
I, uh, yeah, we're gonna hold on discussing that because we have a joint meeting with Victor's staff, uh, next Wednesday. And I said, no, I don't wanna wait till next Wednesday. I wanna take care of it now.
Good.
Exactly. So, um, that's still in the works.
Did we verify there was a wetland up there?
Well, we have photographs.
I figured it. Okay. I just wanna make sure that we make it very clear to them that there was a wetland or there is a wetland or whatever. We make sure that we, um, we don't appreciate us being told, or our neighbor, our residents being told they know what the hell they're talking.
Yeah, right. Um, agree.
I could come to that meeting, but you probably don't want me there.
Um, the, the other thing I wanna bring to your attention is that yesterday we received a letter and a revised site plan on Monarch Manor over there on New Michigan.
Yeah, this was the combining of the three phases, yada, yada, yada.
Right. It was originally approved with the condition that each of the three phases were to follow in sequence, and if there was any change to that, it had come back to the town board. Well, now, now what they're doing is because now what they're doing is because of the uh, situation with the previous owners of A and D Real Estate Development Corporation, both of whom have now passed.
Right.
They want to combine sections three, four, and five into one section. Or at least that's what we understood. Now, in doing that, uh, they're asking the town board to consider amending two conditions out of the fifteen that were in that resolution to uh, allow this change to happen. Well, there's more involved than just simple changing those resolutions. So I have prepared and sent today to the town staff and the town engineers uh, a memo selling out what I see uh, with the issue there with the um, proposed amendments. It's going to require a recall and amending of that local law. It's going to require a referral and recommendation from this board on how to go about uh, the combining of those three sections. My, my concern there is, as I pointed out, we're now talking another builder. We want to have uh, criteria there that the uh, the buildings are gonna match the existing. We don't want second-story buildings over there. Uh, and, and we want to make sure that the letter credit gets renewed for the project. Because the letter credit that was approved back in twenty fifteen, probably couldn't buy two cups of coffee today at Starbucks. So uh, we need to uh, go through that. I'm sure that water and sewer and highway may have some concerns. We did look at some of the things that they promised us they were going to do and they didn't. Uh, so the town did that. So we're, we're taking a serious look at this. And uh, it's going to come before the town board on Wednesday, the twenty-sixth of this month. If the town board uh, agrees to consider this, then they'll refer it the planning board for your April second meeting. The planning board um, normally wants input from the PRC. So that meets on the third. So their input will be um, provided to you for your meeting on the sixteenth. Which would follow with the town board then being able to, I think it's, I forget the dates. Uh, later, the second, the fourth Tuesday of the month uh, to decide whether they're going to consider this rezoning or the amendment or not. And if they do, then it goes through county planning, public hearings, final site, site plan, subdivision approval by this board. A whole list of, of things that uh, I didn't include the planning board in this because at this point in time, alls I know is the town board was, wants you to review it and recommend to them.
Okay, um, anything else Ron?
No, that, that's.
Paula? Highway?
Well, just looking forward to spring.
As we all are.
Seventy-degree days and I'm getting salt, so.
Now you're getting salt.
Now I'm getting salt. Yeah. Now that I don't need it, I'm getting it.
Yeah, don't say that.
Well, I got plenty, so let it snow.
There you go, there you go.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. You're getting two snowplows. You don't need them now.
Lance?
I don't have anything to offer. I'm good.
Okay, nobody else is there? Board, anybody have anything? Bring up. I don't have anything. We know you're gonna talk to Paula afterwards. Any other comments? Motion adjourned by Doug, seconded by Regina. All in favor? Aye. Okay, done. Actually, in less than an hour.